It looks like it's seven o'clock and it looks like we have. A quorum, so welcome to the. Regular meeting of the Roxbury Board of Finance for August seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the last regular meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Thank you much. And welcome to Sarah and Holly, it's good to have you both here. Sarah, I apologize for the late notice regarding the. Fire Department finances, give him Todd a call just yesterday, but. Here we are and we're trying to figure out how to get some money moving. So let's move on to that Barbara Kim, have you got any? Further input on that, I hope so. Barbara, you're muted.
There I am, yeah, I know, I was trying. I'm going to be sending you all an email that I received from OPM. And had some discussions with Kim and I do, I do want to let you know that. We are like a non-essential town. So we learned that we do not have to have our plan in by the end of August. Which gives us a little time to get pricing Jimmy is going to be working on, I don't know if Jimmy's on here, but he's going to be working on the broadband costs for us, you know, to get to the. Senior Center, the Hodge Library, and then also looking at. We can get spectrum to get, get out to the. Park. But some of the other things we do want to get some pricing on and we do want to hone in on the addition to the firehouse. But the other thing is, is that I learned. That we can make donations. Grants, I guess, as you would say, it gets more of a donation to businesses in town that. Maybe suffered due to COVID. One of the Northwest Corner towns has. Designed or come up with an application that businesses can apply to the town and. So I was going to get that. I didn't know how you felt about that. I do know a couple of people, I mean, I know the distillery certainly. Got heard through this, they, you know, had to close and cancel, you know, weddings were canceled, et cetera. The pizza place certainly. Felt it, so I didn't know how you, how you felt about me getting that out and just seeing, you know, what's out there as far as local businesses. There's a lot of businesses, you know, that are just home based, I may not know how they all fared, but. I thought that we would could at least try that. But the other thing is, is that anyone that we do give a, give money to a donation. It has to basically be audited and it. To show that they did spend that money, the way that they said they would spend it. For example, the firehouse and that makes a lot more work for Kim. So while we would like to solicit. From other people, but they may have. Probably the least amount is going to be an easier job for Kim. So. What I would like to do and Jimmy is going to be doing research on the broadband for me, and that is probably one of the easier things that we can put money to. The friends of the senior center, the friends of the library. But how do you feel about going and soliciting from local businesses here? I know some towns are going to do that.
Well, what do you think? Any thoughts?
How do you determine what their losses were due to COVID?
They're going to, they're going to have to, they're going to have to prove it somehow that I need to get my hands on the application that this other town is doing. To see that and so do we want to? Be the ones to make the judgment call on that, they do have to show. Exactly what they're asking them to show, I don't have that answer at the moment. But I will get it.
That is, when you say they're asking them to show, was that be the town that we're speaking of?
Right.
Has the application?
Right.
What, what is, what is the state telling us we have to do?
We can't, we can do that, we can help businesses that lost revenue. Due to COVID.
Okay, so there's a definition there, lost revenue.
There's a definition there and there has to be an application, there has to be a process. And like I said, another town in the Northwest Corner is, has come up. With an application that they are using and they're, they're larger than we are. I'm trying to think which town it was.
Barbara, would the state determine their qualification status or, you know, whether they're. Like if, if we have to present this to the state, would the state be approving that?
No, the, I, I, um, this is Kim Baron, I'm going to jump in, the state has no say in this. This is between the town. And Treasury. It is up to us to come up with those standards, the state's not gonna.
Okay, just, just clarifying that, okay.
Alright, they, you know, we're, we're getting a lot of guidance. Um, a lot of documentation that. Has come and keeps coming from the Department of the Treasury and, and other organizations. So, so it is going to be up to us to put this together.
But does the, does Treasury define what lost revenue is?
It does. It does, and it's not an easy thing to articulate in a. In a few sentences.
You know what, the, the, there are, first of all, I did speak with Johanna Hayes' office. And to try and get some information. CCM is coming out with a toolkit, everybody's now trying to add on information on what you can and cannot do. It is really confusing, it's a good thing we don't have to have something by August thirty first, because I don't know how we do it and comply. But like Kim was saying, they, the, the Treasury does not have a say in it, it comes, it totally falls on the town. But whomever we do decide to help. The town has to say, yes, we did check them out, yes, they can, they can do, it, it falls a hundred percent and it's going to be Kim because. She's the one that's going to have to do all that work.
So I thought Kim was saying that the state doesn't have anything to do with it, the Treasury has something to do with it.
That's correct, I think Barbara misspoke, but yes, the state, the state has no say, they're not going to give us any guidance on it.
Okay.
You know, they will tell you, they will tell you, you need to do your due diligence and if you have issues. Um, they'll want you to seek a legal opinion from your town council if you, if it needs to go to that. And, and then the volumes of. Guidelines that. That are on the Department of the Treasury. Website and, and other websites as well. To help us come to a decision on what we're. What we decide to do and how and what we have to do in order to comply.
Can you actually have time to do this?
It's a big question. It's a lot.
Yeah, there is a lot and I, we would need to be extremely. Careful how we went about this and have. Some strict, easily understandable rules in place, otherwise we could really create some bad feelings in town.
Yeah.
While trying to do good.
Yep. Like I said, there's a lot of home-based businesses. That we haven't a clue how they have fared through all of this, so.
You know, the thing with the federal government is equity for all, you know, all. You know, it, it, a lot of what's in the federal register. Regarding the interim final rule. Has to do with some of the executive orders from the president directly, you know, the day he took office. And, and it, it all goes back to that equity and, and a level playing field, everybody. Has the same opportunity. To benefit from this. From these funds, so it, it's going to be how we, what we decide to do with it and how we articulate that. You know, doing our due diligence, of course, but how we articulate that. Um, there's no pre-approval process, you know, we're kind of doing it in reverse, they've given us the money. Now you've got to. Spend it, but make sure you dot your i's and cross your t's.
So good, two questions. The first is, what is our actual deadline for a preliminary plan? And the second is. How would we go about deciding what portion of the money to allocate to help out local businesses? Without having the applications in hand and knowing what. Will be asked for.
So, so I have to do a mea culpa here, my bad. Um, because I gave you the wrong date of August thirty first, so it is the first. The quarter we have till September thirtieth. Of, uh, from the, from the time that we, the award was granted to us, which was in June. Till the end of September, so that's the first time period. That we will be reporting on and I have a month to get that together and, and sent to the Treasury. So October, so by October thirty first, I have to have a report. And then. And then consequently, every annually thereafter. By October thirty first, with the year ending September thirty.
Okay.
Obviously.
So that was the easy question to answer. What's the Board of Finance think about my second question, how would we go about? Deciding how much to allocate?
I, I, um.
Can I, can I just interject one thing here, I, I, I apologize for interrupting. Because I know it's not my meeting, but, but for example, um, let me just. Let, let me just give you an example. When they want to provide assistance to households in town, if you will. And how do you decide on monies, cash and in, in form of cash payment? Whatever, how it reads in the federal register. How do you decide that and what they recommend you do is you obviously can't give somebody, you know. Ten thousand dollars without having something to show for it. They, they suggest that you follow. Amounts similar to what people received via the stimulus. You know, through the coronavirus relief fund and now this money. Um, so what, so how the federal government decided to distribute stimulus checks. To the citizens of the US, and I believe a lot of that was based upon your income tax.
Or adjusted gross income.
Right, adjusted gross income, so, so, so everyone kind of got the same thing, if you will, you know, whether. I think it was fourteen hundred dollars the first time, maybe twelve hundred dollars the second time. And so on and so forth, so. So there's a little bit of guidance there for something like that, so. Still a lot of work. You may have to look at things like that, how things were handled previously. By the federal government for people to receive stimulus.
So. I. My first preference would be that this money go as much as we can to, to something that resembles the public good. And. Firehouse, the nonprofits. I think the business. Option is a can of worms on so many levels for us, we don't have experience doing it. We don't really know who, who other businesses are. I think, I, I think the potential for us to create more bad will than goodwill is high. So it's not where I would go first. Plus the administrative issues that Barbara's raised.
Yeah. We don't even know how many more, how much, if we allocate, how much we allocate or even do any of the research in. Basically forty days, forty something days. That would be very, very tough to do, I, I would agree, it's going to cause more problems.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I will also say there is a rule and I have to read more on it. In the federal register about fifty thousand dollars. A threshold for certain. Projects. And all of the stipulations that kick in after, you know, if you, if you. If you give or donate. Money. Uh, to that, to that threshold. There's a number of things that kick in, so. But I'm, but I have to, I have to kind of zero in on that and read more about that, so.
I know, because was it, um, fifty thousand? Included the fifty and above or, and so it was up to forty nine or did it include fifty? Can't remember.
Um, I gotta look here.
But whatever it is, I mean, we do have to figure that out also.
Maybe the way to proceed since. Time is not quite as pressing as it was, as it seemed a couple of weeks ago, is put numbers on. Some of the things that we have talked about in the past and let's see what is left, you know, talking about things like AEDs and. Broadband and so on and so forth.
We have some of the durable equipment quotes from the ambulance, but we don't have the broadband and that, that's going to be a bigger one, so. You know, definitely want to get that.
And what about the police radios, weren't we going to price that, I mean, the cameras?
They are not eligible.
They're not eligible.
The police cameras, no.
Good. How about the firehouse?
That would be eligible, yes. To put cameras over there if you wanted to do that.
No, 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 no.
Um.
The addition.
I, I, I think you can make a case for it, yes.
Yes, I do too.
But, um. It's going to be a tough one and I believe this is the. Thing where we need to get maybe a legal opinion on it. As far as how it reads. You know, because you're talking about the law itself, it's section six oh three for anybody who wants to look at the law. In the Social Security Act that pertains to non-entitlement units, us, that meaning us. And the federal register, you got, you got, you have to kind of read them both at the same. Time to, to get it and. Where you have to interpret. You probably want to have some type of opinion behind it.
Do we know anybody else that's proposing this? A similar, a similar, a similar expenditure.
Not that I'm aware of.
Property.
No, because the two infrastructure projects that they said you can absolutely do. It's, um, has to do with transportation, I believe, and the bread broadband. But there's also. What I did get back from Johanna Hayes' office is, you know. Regarding my specific questions about building a garage for ambulance, look close, she said, look closely at section two, there's, nobody gives you an answer, but. Here you look at closely at section two point A, pages twenty through three through forty five of the IRF. She said, I think you will find it in there, and it's like, could you just tell me what it is? No.
The IRF is the what? What is the IRF?
That is the interim final rule. And, and that is difficult to read because the print is small, I had to use a magnifying glass to read it. It's not. It, it's not, it's time consuming, it's not easy to navigate, but.
Lawyers are good at those little letters, why don't we get the little lawyers to tell us what the hell we can do here and do it fast?
Yeah, I agree with that, John. Because. We're just, you know, swinging in the dark otherwise.
Right, and in my opinion is, I, I, I think you can, but I'm not the legal authority here, but, but you always have to bring it back to. How does it prevent and it, you always have to bring it back to COVID. And, and protecting the public. From the.
I think it certainly fits. But, um, I'm going to send you this email. So that y'all can help yourselves reading it also and. It's, you know, it says, as a reminder, the US Treasury has stated that they will not pre-certify expense eligibility.
Right.
So they're going to audit us two years from now and ask for the money back.
They can.
And they got a lot of time to audit us too.
Yeah.
They have five years, they have five years after two thousand twenty six. To do it, five years.
And also another thing that I found out that she told me was. That the money does not have to be spent by twenty twenty four, it has to be contracted by twenty twenty four.
Right.
December.
Well, that's significantly different.
Yes, it is.
No, that's always been in there, you have, you have to have it committed by twenty twenty four and spent by twenty twenty six. And from twenty twenty six, you have five years of record keeping to keep.
So twenty twenty six, it has to be finished.
Correct.
Okay.
But we did say. Has to be spent by twenty twenty four, we did, to you.
I'm, I'm not.
No, no.
Do you think anybody is going to turn this money down? I mean, I could make an argument for turning it down, I'm not saying we should, but I, I, you know, at some point. I think we need to take into account, there's risk involved in this. You know, I'm on a board of a managed care plan where in New York where the state routinely claws money back four years after the money was spent. Um, so it, it's not a. It's not an impossibility that that could happen to us.
Think maybe one way around that is to. Only consider spending the money on projects like the firehouse that we were. Planning to fund at some level anyway. You know, so if, if the money does get taken back, well, we'd have been somehow or another coming up with it anyway. And then my computer just locked up.
I, uh, this is Sarah. I think that the more information we can get in terms of the legality, in terms of. Usage, et cetera, if, you know, the better, certainly. Uh, we need to figure out the prevailing wage issue. How that would come into play, if at all. Et cetera, et cetera, so I, I, you know. While I think it's a wonderful possible opportunity, I don't want to do anything that will regret or end up in the funny pages of the paper later on.
Well, that's very well put, Sarah, there's, there's two sides to this, one. Is allocating the money and the next one is auditing the allocation. Which creates liability for us on two fronts. Yeah, somebody decides, if somebody does something there that is. Not consistent with what the requirements are for, whatever the requirements are across the entire federal spectrum. Then we've got a real problem. Even if.
So let me just add one more thing.
You could do this, but you have to do it this way. And we're the ones that are responsible for this way.
So let me add just one more thing, um, if I may, because there was a discussion at the last meeting about prevailing wage and Davis Bacon, does Davis Bacon apply or doesn't apply? And whose rules do we have to follow, so. In the frequently and, and part of what the Treasury gave us as far as frequently asked questions. Um, it does say that Davis Bacon. Will be waived for projects if the project is fully funded with these ARPA funds. However, um, I was able to finally connect with the woman at the Department of Labor today, she finally called me back, the Connecticut Department of Labor. And, uh, so Davis, as far as the build out at the firehouse, uh, the prevailing wage will apply. In all cases, even if we give them a portion to, um, to use, because it is a renovation of an existing town building. And the threshold for prevailing wage in that case is a hundred thousand dollars. So. So that, that is that, I know there was a question about. Who's prevailing wage, do we follow the federal or the, or the state, in this case, it'll be, it would be the state.
Kim, so I understand you. Because I got a different opinion, not regarding this particular money coming in, but regarding the town building, if the ambulance was able to. Not borrow and fund it fully. I was given advice and opinion that we would be able to use private contractors and not do prevailing wage because it's not financed in any way, it was a cash.
No, it, it, I don't, I don't believe that. I, I don't know specifically the answer to that, but I don't believe that is the case.
Maybe when we.
Because it's a public building.
Maybe when we ask for, you know, some guidance on this, we can get a legal thoughts from Gail on that.
Yeah, I, I, I think that Kim is right because it is a town building. I don't know that you can just. Hire locals with, without going out to bid.
Well, no, go through the bid process, but not have to do prevailing wage.
Um, I don't, I don't think you can get around that, but, but we'll, we'll get a further clarification on it.
Can we talk about the lawyer question, you know? Are there lawyers? Or consultants, there must be lawyers or consultants who are making some money at this point specializing in this, I mean, I'm, you know. As much as we all think highly of Gail, I'm not sure that, that this is her specialty and I, I think we ought to find a lawyer who's. Who's, who's working on. Either that or, and or hire a consultant who could advise us and Kim and Barbara on some of these things, because I'm. Somebody else said it, I think we're going to just go around in circles.
Yeah, we need to do it soon.
I'll, I'll, I'll get somebody tomorrow. I'll find someone that maybe one of the other towns are using. And. And ask that question. Although there, there is someone in her office that can answer that, not necessarily her. But I'm just, uh. Reading something that was sent here. And it's, you know, Q and As, and it says, what types of services are eligible as responses to the negative economic impacts of the pandemic? And so it goes. Onto naming a whole lot of things, food assistance, rent, mortgage, et cetera. Just lost my place. I'm sorry, here it is. What type, um, this is what I meant, what types of COVID nineteen response mitigation and prevention activities are eligible? So they are saying that, you know, services in congregate living facilities, nursing homes, incarceration settings, homeless shelters, group living. And other key settings like schools, so it's saying ventilation improvements in those healthcare settings or other key locations. Meaning enhancement of public health data systems and other public health responses. And I think that we can make a case that public health response is the ambulance association. Capital investments in public facilities to meet pandemic operational needs are also eligible. Such as physical plant improvements to hospitals, health clinics, or adaptations to public buildings. To implement COVID nineteen mitigation tactics. And basically they were saying, if you can sell it with how you interpret this, then you.
What were those last four words?
Yeah, thank you.
To implement COVID nineteen. To implement COVID nineteen mitigation tactics.
Yeah, that's what I see at the end of every one of these paragraphs I've read.
But it's capital investment in public facilities to meet pandemic operational needs are also eligible. Then it goes on such as, but capital investments in public health, in public facilities. To meet pandemic operational needs. To me. Number one is the ambulance. So I, I, I'll throw that out to an attorney if that's what you would like.
But I think those, I think the, the question of how closely. This has to be tied to losses or offsets from COVID. Is the key to this, and I don't think we have a good understanding yet of what um. How critical, you know, if John is saying he's seen that at the end of every sentence. It seems to me we can't ignore it.
No, you can't, absolutely not. It, it all has to come back to that. At the end of the day.
I mean, I could make an argument that this is protect, this is getting us ready for the next pandemic. But I'm not sure that's what that language means.
Yeah, I think we need a consultant or an attorney to guide us here because we really are spinning our wheels without. Knowing for sure. So I'm not sure how much more we can accomplish uh, on this tonight. Um, what do we think?
Well, you know, I'm just. To get one end of the spectrum here, federal government is giving out how many trillions of dollars to individuals in this country? Citizens of the, I don't even know if they're citizens. Uh, anybody who files an income tax and has an adjusted gross income below a certain level over in two thousand and. Twenty, I guess it is, on that money. And. So is, just for uh, for descriptive purposes. So one, one um, safe harbor here is to go to the federal government, find out everybody in Roxbury who got a check. Take that number divided into six hundred thirty two thousand and write him another check. That's now who's, now the federal government can't come back to you on that one. That's what they did. I'm not suggesting we do that. I'm just saying, there's one ridiculous end of the spectrum.
Right, that's right.
And that's the only safe harbor that I can think of without getting somebody else to tell me what it is.
Yeah. Let's get someone to tell us. So unless there's more to say on the COVID relief funds, let's move on to the selectmen's report.
Oh, selectmen's report, okay.
Let me back up just a little bit. I have a question for Sarah. How far along are you folks in terms of designing the, the work you want done?
Uh, we have plans drawn up. We've started before COVID, we had started going through the approval process for a building permit. So we've had contractors look at it, ballpark a figure. We've um, gone through. Um, you know, we're at the plant, place where we have plans drawn and, and we're ready to. Put a shovel in if anybody wants to write us a big check.
We're trying.
I mean, I mean, like, that's what's holding us up is trying to figure out how to pay for it.
But didn't you say that you had the um, capital campaign letter ready to go?
Yeah, it's gonna go out in September. Once people are back, you know, focused in on things, it's ready to go in September. There is gonna be a capital campaign letter that's sent as well as. Um, some uh. One on ones that will take place with individuals amongst our community.
So the um, the budget numbers that you guys have worked up, I assume are not based on prevailing wage.
No, they're not.
And now my computer.
Probably double.
Okay, thank you. With the labor portion of it, well, the materials won't.
But also the materials were priced before everything went through the roof too, so.
Yeah, so they've doubled.
Number you're using in that ladder.
We're estimating, we were estimating about six hundred and seventy five to seven hundred thousand, all said and done.
So now we're over a million.
If it's got a, yeah, we've got to go a different route. So.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yep.
Okay. Um, anyone else have anything to say on that before I turn it over to Barbara for her report?
You know, I just have one little thing to add. I sent y'all a fact sheet before the last Board of Finance meeting. And I do say in there that the money has to be committed by twelve thirty one twenty four and spent by twelve thirty one twenty six. So, so I want to be, stand corrected that I did communicate that properly to you all.
Thank you, Kim.
Yeah.
I didn't. I said it had to be spent, so.
Um.
So can I uh, just as a, as a follow-up, what are the next steps regarding who, what we're gonna try and do here? To get, we're gonna talk to lawyers, we're gonna talk to accountants, what are we doing?
Well, I think Barbara needs to figure out whether we need a lawyer or a consultant. Um, and as soon as we get some answers, I'll schedule another um, meeting. Um, you know, a regular, um, um, what's the word I'm looking for, a special meeting. But I think that depends on. Knowing, knowing what the, the game, the ground rules are.
And then also for the things that we had talked about, you know, the broadband. That we, I thought we had agreed that we would use that uh, as one of the options. And um, just the, the, the ambulance equipment, we, we, which we do have costs on. But the um, broadband, Jimmy's going to be researching that. So that we have some idea where we are with it.
I think, I thought we were also gonna check with um, the friends of the both organizations.
Right. Yep. But those are smaller costs. Um, that, and we, I mean, we have a couple of things, you know, the health department, the health department would like some help. The, the senior center um, is looking, you know, for a couple of dollars for um. Ah, so it was a camera screen.
I think if we can get a compilation of those numbers, um, as well as.
I'll make you a list of, of what we have, but um, I, you know, Jimmy probably get an idea, I mean, within a week. So I was thinking that if we met again after uh, the holiday, which is.
Was a holiday?
Last holiday you had was in two thousand and twenty.
So we can meet. Either um, you know, that during that week or the week after, whatever you would like.
Yeah.
Maybe on a Thursday, the ninth, we would have some numbers.
Okay.
I have another question, Andy, really quick. You sent out an email just before the meeting about uh, picking and fiddling.
Yeah.
You want me to speak on that?
Yes, please.
Um, I'm the treasurer of the Fire Department, so I went back and uh, looked at the. Five years profit that was made on picking and fiddling and presented, I think Todd forwarded that information to Andy.
Yes, and I forwarded it.
Okay, um, and that is the five years. The two years that are really low are weather related and the other years are better weather.
Well, the numbers were, went from like four thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's not a lot, in the scheme of things.
But we've lost two years here.
Two years worth, yes.
And the weather was good on those days.
That's right.
Yeah, and Google looked at the weather, it was great.
So you probably did lose close to thirty thousand dollars.
I would think so.
Probably.
We should keep that in mind too.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that should go on the list of.
Yeah, that one seems like an, an easy, uh, as John said, a safe harbor. I'm not sure how anyone could debate that that wasn't COVID, COVID related.
Directly correlated, yep.
Thank you, Sarah.
Well, I did um, speak with the, the chief and uh, you know, had mentioned that we were looking for. Uh, different. Avenues to funnel some of this money. And I mean, he was all on board with the addition. Talked about trucks. Um, he said, you know, we're in pretty good shape. And if there was some help, that he would vote to have it go to the addition to the firehouse. So, you know, we can just keep this conversation on going and uh. As we find out different costs, maybe be able to hone in on where we should be. I do know some other towns are going to the public with it. But uh, you know, to get some ideas, but I, I think we have enough ideas. I think we just need to come up with the costs. And that might really muddy the waters if we do that.
Yeah.
So that's totally up to all of you. Those are my thoughts.
When do you think we would go to the public?
Well, you know what? We can absolutely go to the public when we come up with, this is our list. What do you, what do you think? But if we're gonna be asking for ideas, not everybody's gonna be reading this. You know, frequently asked questions or all of the information that's been sent out. I know Kim has spent an inordinate amount of time reading through this. So we could waste a lot of time saying, yeah, but that, we can't do that, we can't do that, we can't do that.
Right. I, but I also don't wanna be in a position where people say. Oh, you spent six hundred thousand dollars of money that was coming in and nobody knew anything about it. I'm not saying we have to ask. At this point, but I think before, at some point, we need to, we, there needs to be a public notification, I think.
We could hold a um, once we have a firm or idea, maybe later in September. Uh, we could have a public hearing now.
Or just a public meeting even.
Well, I'm saying a public hearing is. Easier because we don't engage, the board does not engage during a public hearing. The, the operative there to hear what they have to say. So it's not a back and forth conversation. Um, we listen to them. If there are ideas we like, we can adapt them later on. Um, but we don't have to have that conversation in the meeting or in the hearing, and it doesn't drag on forever.
I think they need to be given, this is what we have coming, this is what we have come up with.
Yep.
And then let them respond, but to not have any ideas. And then just say, what do you think? We'll be starting from ground zero. But I think that, yeah, yes, the information does need to get out there. Right now, it hasn't been anything real solid to let people know, except that. In my next um, email blast, I can certainly talk about this money and that the boards of finance and, and selectmen are working on how it should be spent.
I, I have a technical question. Does this go through the budget process? Are we spending the money? Does it go in the budget? How, how, what I'm, my, the specific question is, do we need a public meeting to approve it? If we're spending the money?
It's a good question. I would say no, but.
Does it, technically, does it go through the budget process?
I would have to say it does. But, but I'm not sure about that, because you're kind of sidestepping a lot of. Regulation by passing, bypassing the state and going directly to Treasury.
Than any other grant that somebody might give us? I mean, if you, if you, you know, kind of cut away all of the. The, all of the complications, isn't it money that somebody's giving us that we're gonna spend as a town?
Yeah.
Well, yes and no. It depends. It depends how we spend it. If we, if we spend part of it on a public, a, a building the town owns. Yes, but you do have to remember, you cannot use this money to. Buy down a budget or whatever. It kind of sit, it kind of sits out on its own.
But it's gonna, eventually, it's gonna flow through the budget. Isn't this money gonna flow through the budget at some point?
What's the line item?
I don't believe so. There is, there is no line item for it in this budget. So, um. But I have, I, I have it sit, I have it sitting out all on its own, um. In an account at the state right now. Just for a place to put it and keep it segregated from the rest of the general fund.
Do we physically have this money? We have half of it now and half.
We had half of it, correct. We had half of it.
I think this is a Rico question.
And we could write checks. We could write checks um, out of that.
Right, I mean, obviously, you know, it may, it may have to pass through the general fund, but. But I don't think it becomes part of the general fund, the budget, if you will.
It'd feel a lot better.
Their capital, they are, they are certainly gonna be, some of it may be spent in a capital way, capital dollars.
But it's not anything that we've have in our plan at the moment.
Right, correct.
We're not moving budget lines.
Right, no, 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 the budget is what it is without it.
So next year, we're gonna give fifteen thousand dollars to the friends of, the friends of, of the library.
Right.
How would that process work?
Write him a check.
From?
That account we have at this start.
Yeah, from the special fund. It'll, it'll be a pass through. It'll be a pass through, probably through the general fund. It'll be, you know, kind of on the balance sheet. It's not gonna get a budget per se.
It's a separate account now, correct?
Yes.
It is, I'm, I'm in the process of moving it. I just set up the account and I'm gonna be moving it.
How is the account titled?
Well, right now, it's sitting in an account that came, you know, it comes in uh, ACH from the state. When we actually received the money, it's still sitting in that account.
What's the name on the account?
It is the State of Connecticut, our ACH uh, grant, grant funding account. And that's what we use to receive all of our grant money. No matter whether it comes from the federal government or the state. So that's where it's sitting. And now I, it is going into a town of Roxbury slash ARP account. And it'll, it's just gonna be kind of sitting out there all on its own. It, it, it is really kind of a one-off. It, it's not really part of any fund per se. Cause it's coming directly from that, we've never received money directly from the Department of the Treasury and the federal government before. This is all new.
Neither, neither have I. It's always been a one-way transaction.
So, um, so it's kind of just sitting out there. It's not commingled with anything. So.
All right. Okay. So Barbara, what else do you have?
Just real quick, um. Uh, the Public Works Garage roof uh, had some damage from the last storm and we did put in a um. Um, an insurance claim and they're chomping at the bit to write us a check. So in the meantime, I put this roof out to bid, a roof replacement for the, the, the main garage and the shed that's right behind it. And we decided we were gonna go with a metal roof. So um, it went out to bid. I know we have to get three bids, went in the newspaper. And only got one bid back. Nice, um. So becau, so I actually asked the Board of Selectmen if I could award this bid. So we could move on it and collect that fifteen thousand dollar check from the insurance company. And uh, and not go out to bid again. I don't think it's worth it. Because um, I don't think we're gonna get anybody else to respond. It went, you know, like I said. It went, you know, like I said, in the Republican American, that's our paper of, leap, our legal paper of notice and um, so we're just gonna go, we are gonna go with the one bid. The um, and I had gotten an estimate for the main garage during the budget process before costs went uh, pretty high. And so we budgeted, whoops, we budgeted forty-five thousand dollars for this roof. And then in speaking with the Public Works guys, they were saying, you know, we really should do the, the shed that's right behind it. Um, because this all drains onto it. And when it was looked at, they said, well, it could probably go another couple of years. Well, if we're gonna wait two years, we might as well do the whole thing. So the town, uh, the garage itself is forty thousand. And then um, the other one that we added on is fifteen. So the fifteen will cover the add-on for the insurance. And we have budgeted forty-five, so we're like five thousand to the good. So I think that's probably the right thing to do. Do everything at once and not come back again. Um, the, okay, so today I got noticed that we did get the grant applied for, for the affordable housing. My phone, I'm sorry. The Affordable Housing Plan Grant Technical Assistance Program. And um, to the tune of fourteen thousand five, six hundred dollars. I just got that email today, which means we can move forward. Uh, we are going to hire someone from the COG because if I hire someone from the COG, I did not have to do an RFP to find someone. Um, so what I'm going to do is put together the names that we have for the steering committee for this group. Um, and uh, get this moving. We have to have a plan by June of next year. So if any of you are interested in surveying on it, you certainly can. I do have a list of interested people. I think it'll um, and they come from all walks of life. But it's a mandate that we have to do. And, you know, we've had affordable housing regulations in our zoning for many years. Um, but regardless, th, this plan has to get done. And I'm hoping to have um, a volunteer recognition picnic, something on September the twelfth. Uh, I know that's coming up pretty quickly, but I've always, like, the last two years, I have not done that. But I would like to do it this final year again on that same weekend. And uh, we'll get some information out about that. So that's really what it, what's going on here. Just trying to clean up. It's not, not an easy thing.
All right. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to add? I wanna thank Holly and Sarah for uh, your patience and participation. Uh, it's always, it was good to have faces other than ours growing up. And uh, we'll see you in about two weeks then.
Pretty rare ones, I might add.
Certainly than mine.
I will send you an email when I get something um, from an, an attorney. Uh, try to really find out about the um, what was I gonna do? Uh, come up with something to let the people know that we're working on this and uh, try and figure out an answer. And when we get some costs for the other things, we'll put them in a list and let you know where we are.
Okay. Let's pencil in a meeting for the Thursday after Labor Day. Yeah, Slaver Day.
Okay, that is.
Can we keep it on a Tuesday like our normal meetings or is there a preference for Thursday?
I have no objection.
I've got a conflict with, excuse me, it's Julie. I've got a conflict that Thursday. I've got a planning meeting.
And we have a selectments meeting on that Tuesday. Uh, I mean, we just, it depends how much we have on our agenda, whether.
We could do Wednesday. Is, is there something wrong with Wednesday?
I'll let you know if we're gonna have a combined finance selectman's meeting. But I, I, it will really all depend upon how much information I can get back and get to you.
So this is kinda, this is just preliminary, it's a save the date sort of thing at this point. Uh, let's find out what Barbara finds out and we can uh, make a decision in the next week or so.
Or you could definitely put it on for the fourteenth, which is a Tuesday, fourteenth. And then your regular meeting is the twenty-first. Go and do that. We can do the pencil-in thing.
Pencil-in, yes. All right, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Is it the eighth or is it gonna be the fourteenth?
That's a good, um.
For a pencil-in.
I would rather do it sooner rather than later, so that we have more time.
Just in case we have more questions before our next meeting.
Yeah.
I think probably the eighth is best if everyone's okay with that.
I, I agree.
Andy, the, the eighth is no good for me.
Okay. Um, what about the fourteenth then? Is that good for you, Ed? Is that good for everyone?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Works for me.
Okay.
Okay, Paul might be back from France then. He's coming back sometime relatively soon.
Yeah, he should be here.
Okay, well, let's, let's figure on the fourteenth.
Another meeting after that. We'll book it. We still have two weeks after that. We have two and a half weeks after that date.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? I didn't think so. Um, have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Night.
Good night.